...allows the flexibility of people to just go on their phones to be able to make the kinds of payments that they need.
And City Riders can also ride free on the Dash Bus. City Ride is wheelchair accessible and the maximum cost for a one-way trip is $4.
City Ride is available weekdays from 6:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. and taxi cabs are available 24/7. For more information, you can log on to ladottransit.com or call 818-808-RIDE. They're creepy and they're crawly, and for many of us, they can be a little scary. But for some people, spiders are beautiful and gentle creatures that are more scared of us than we are of them. We head to the Spider Pavilion at the Natural History Museum.
To some, they are creepy crawly things. To others, they are beauty in motion. The new Spider Pavilion that just opened at the Natural History Museum is crawling with eight-legged web weavers of all kinds, hundreds of them, and they are everywhere.
So could we be walking and a spider falls on top of us? One of these big giant spiders?
You never want to say never, but generally speaking, when people are coming in, it doesn't happen. They're really safe and comfortable in their webs. They're very secure. They're not dropping or falling on people.
It was really fascinating, much bigger than I thought they would be. And they really kind of are everywhere.
So what does it people tell you, the reason that they're scared of spiders?
Mostly, it's the legs.
Yes, all those mini-long hairy legs doing things. Val Hatcher, a guide at the Spider Pavilion and the museum, says these insects are things of beauty.
You're a spider lady?
I am a spider lady, yes. Did you know that without these spiders, we humans might starve to death? According to our guide, the spiders eat all the bugs and insects that might otherwise gobble up our food.
The mist is here. We do want to make sure that our spiders have everything they need, both food and water.
To Hatcher, the eight-legged creatures are not just beautiful. They are artistic. They are clean, neat, and industrious. We saw many quite focused on their life's work, weaving all those webs. Oh, and they recycle, too, often eating their tattered webs in order to rebuild them.
One's eating another spider.
Oh, it's eating?
Yeah.
That one's eating.
And these spiders can be bloodthirsty cannibals. Up, down, and all around, the creatures lurk, waiting to see who falls in their web. But no need to fear.
If something big and scary walks by them, their number-one response is to run away and hide. So they want to get as far away from us as possible. They are way more scared of us than we are of them.
It was fun, overwhelming. We were a little scared at first, but then we started to relax and started to see how cool they were.
Are you bigger fans now? No?
I'd still probably call my mom.
For more information, visit nhm.org and click on the Spider Pavilion. Dealing with work and family obligations are enough to stress anyone out, but there's a place in South LA that offers tranquility and peace of mind. Anita Bennett takes us inside.
On this busy stretch of Adams Boulevard in South LA, there's something you'd never expect, a spiritual oasis called the Peace Awareness Labyrinth in Gardens, and it's helping Angelenos unwind.
I think everybody needs a place to get away, and sometimes you can't go, you know, far away. So being right here in the middle of the city just makes it really convenient for everyone.
Sean Redding is a working actor, but the stresses of going on auditions, waiting for callbacks, and learning his lines can be overwhelming.
Well, a lot of times, I come to meditate. I'll come to the gardens here and I'll just sit down and do some breath work, some meditation.
Pramjeet makes the trek from Northridge. She likes to attend the one-day retreats and healing events.
You know, for me, I'm a very sensitive person, so I can really tell and feel when my nervous system feels overstimulated. And there's really nothing like meditation to get that relaxed feeling.
Each year, about 5,000 people come here from across the LA area, and when they're not taking classes or attending events, they walk this labyrinth to meditate and reflect.
So our thing is like, we are providing what people need most, which is relaxation, de-stressing, and peace. And that's become, you know, absolutely vital in our society.
The facility opened to the public in 2004, and while some people come to meditate on the park benches, others reflect or listen to the relaxing sounds of a waterfall. Visitors say this tranquility is just what they need to recharge.
Admission to Peace Awareness Labyrinth and Gardens is free, but you need a ticket to go inside. Head over to peace labyrinth dot org for more information. It's a new lab that puts creativity within reach for all LA residents. Rashid Goel has more on how the Central Library is encouraging people to expand their imagination.
Imagine walking into a room with all the latest technological tools to create anything you want. Well, it's here at the Octavia Lab at the Central Library in downtown LA, a do-it-yourself center to dream, explore, and create, and it's open to the public.
We have this lab at the library because we are looking to show how people learn and how people become more technologically included inside our, you know, fast-changing world. We're trying to create, you know, have people have access to technology they would not normally have, either in schools, like low-grade school kids or as adults.
The lab is named in honor of Octavia Butler, an acclaimed pioneer of science fiction who broke ground as an award-winning author in a male-dominated genre. She regularly spent her time at the Central Library.
She was a well-beloved library patron. She was coming to the library pretty much every day, every week, every month, depending on where she was living, from the '70s into the '90s. She would pretty much have her favorite table in the history department. She would do research. She would write here. And part of her credo and her belief and her advice to people is to be persistent, to be persistent, to use the library, and to be creative. You know, all you need in order to create universes is the library.
There are so many different stations to choose from. Now, this is really a great opportunity to get your creative juices flowing. I have to say, one of my favorites is the 3D printing. You can create anything you want and print it. So whether it's the library or, hey, an Eiffel Tower, you basically come in, create the design you want, and print it as a 3D model. You can cut your own artwork, logo, or design, or use the computerized embroidery machine to stitch your own items, or take photos and videos with a green screen, or even perhaps make a movie or podcast in the studio. Okay, so who still owns some of those old VHS tapes, audio cassettes? You know you have them. Well, this might be your favorite station then. V, I understand that we can convert some of that stuff so we can preserve it?
This is going to be the equipment that brings in the generations. So this is a DIY memory lab, and with it, you can convert reel-to-reel, 8mm. We can record VHS. We can record cassettes. You haven't seen one of those in a while. And from it, using a piece of hardware called right over here, and it converts an analog signal into a digital signal. So you can convert these items into MOV or MP4, MP3 stuff your kids would understand or your little kids will understand. But pretty much, this is a way of preserving our heritage and having it continue on digitally.
I love that. So I can bring my personal tapes in and convert them here?
That's the plan, yes.
All right. I think I'm going to come back for this one for sure. The Octavia Lab is a digital media maker space that is free to use, and all you need is your library card. There might be some printing charges depending on the projects. And if you're not feeling sure about what to actually do, well, you can always come to this machine, and there's a message of inspiration. In fact, you'll get a quote along with even some suggestions on what you can work on. So put on your creative hat and make your way down to the Octavia Lab, only at the Central Library in downtown Los Angeles.
For more info, log on to lapl.org/labs. Can the transformation of a mom-and-pop store help improve the health of an entire community near downtown LA? Well, Lupita's Corner Market owner says yes, as they reopen their doors with a much healthier menu.
A little more paint shelving and the stocking of merchandise, and Lupita's Market is almost ready for business, the business of making the community healthier.
Once a year, we do select one or two small markets to become a transformation. Right now, we're trying to catch up. We are bringing in some merchandise. We're bringing in fruits.
This was Lupita's Market just over six months ago, a dark, cramped mom-and-pop store on a street corner near downtown LA, where the snack du jour for kids coming in after school was often junk food. But Musarango, her mother and family, who owned the store, wanted to change that and lead the way to healthier food choices.
A lot of our community, they find it really difficult to go to stores and travel miles away just to have either healthier food options. Having a community market that has everything that everybody needs is what we have become. It's a very passionate project for a lot of people, as it is to our family.
The Los Angeles Food Policy Council, which helps stores go healthier, stepped in, awarding Lupita's Market a chance at a complete store rehab through its Healthy Neighborhood Network Market Program. Now, $100,000 in renovations later, the market is ready to be reborn.
The basic menu is going to be affordable for the community, and they're going to have salads. We're going to have soups.
The Healthy Neighborhood Market Network Program is to help small, big business store owners in underserved communities, specifically small market owners, to have healthy, fresh, affordable options. These are communities that are generally categorized as food deserts.
The project got a lot of help with pro bono work from the Gensler Architectural Firm and Build Group Construction.
We had this idea of farmer's market, so where you would have baskets of fruits and vegetables, and that's what we designed into the furniture in the front.
There's going to be seating out front behind the counter here, and the challenging part was the store front walls. We had to actually tear it down.
For the kids who still expect to get their daily after-school snacks, Lupita's Market is offering curbside service during the renovation.
So the kids come even though you remind them?
Yeah, they, yeah. They told me, "Oh, my God, Lupita's no more. What happened?" And I said, "No, I'm here." So I want to say to everybody, "I'm here."
Oh, they are definitely here, better than ever. And bananas, oranges, tomatoes, and yogurt never looked so good on a shelf.
That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder, you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of LA This Week.
Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, Mr. City Attorney and Madam Clerk, it's my understanding we have no general public comment cards, so let's close public comment.
Want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council. Please call the roll.
Bloom and Phil Bonin, Bousqueino, Sidio, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Lee moves. Krikorian seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rodriguez moves. Corretts seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Why don't we rise, Ms., for our flag salute. Ms. Rodriguez, would you lead us in our flag salute today? All rise.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we all please face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's run through the agenda at this time, Madam Clerk.
And, Mr. President, due to the upcoming council recess, would council like to send all items forthwith today?
Great idea. We'd love to do that.
Thank you. And then, items 1 through 11 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do you have cards?
There are cards on item 1 only.
Okay, let's hold that item and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Please continue.
And, Mr. President, the items with ordinances, items 2 through 7, will be held over unless reconsidered with 12 members later this meeting.
Okay.
Items 12 through 21 are items which public hearings have been held. The Budget and Finance Committee reports have been posted and circulated for items 19 and 20.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on those items. In fact, Mr. Bonin? Let's hold 16, per Mr. Bonin. Now, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, again, the items with ordinances will be held over one week.
Okay.
Items 22 through 35 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Mr. President, there is a card on item 25, and item 23 should also be held for an amending motion.
Okay, let's hold those items and let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, continue.
Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City Attorney and Madam Clerk, it's my understanding we have no general public comment cards, so let's close public comment. Do we have Ms. Mendoza, Diana Mendoza? Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Hi, thank you. All right, I'm, sorry. Good morning. I'm Diana Mendoza, and I'm PETA's program manager for Let's Fix LA, which helps residents get their animals spayed or neutered. We oppose this change as it takes vital resources away from low-income residents, making it harder for them to comply with LA's mandatory spay-neuter law, which is a great law, but in our outreach to the community, the number-one issue we find for spay-neuter is a lack of funds, which is why this fund was created in the first place and which is why we're here every year at the budget hearings advocating on behalf of animal services for more spay-neuter funding. Changing this language of the fund... Changing this language of the fund to allow groups to access it means there will be fewer resources for low-income residents to get their animals fixed, resulting in more of them violating the law. It means vulnerable people who can't afford to get their animals sterilized will be at an increased risk of being fined and penalized, and more homeless and feral cats, because these owned cats who aren't getting fixed will continue to reproduce. We ask you to please vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming down. Okay, let's prepare, Madam Clerk, to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's go to Item 1K. Item 1K, do we have a Terry William? Terry William, please come forward, sir. Welcome.
Good morning. I'm here on the case at 6136 Flight Avenue. I've talked to Tony regarding the lien, and the city has agreed to not file the lien against the property.
Could you repeat the last part of that, Mr. William?
I'm calling... I'm here on behalf of Frankie Green for the property located at 6136 Flight Avenue in the City of Los Angeles. I've spoken to the Building and Safety Finance Office, Tony, and they agree not to file the lien against the property.
Okay, so, Mr. Bonin, how do you want to...
Why don't we continue that item for a week, and my staff will work it out?
Yeah, sort that out. So, what we'll do, we'll continue that item. If we did it for one week, it would be December 3rd.
Cool.
And then, we can verify that information.
Okay, Tony is over here.
Okay, well, then, it'll give time to sort all of that out. So, we'll remove that from action today.
And, sir, remember, my staff is going to come over and talk to you right now. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. President, the request to continue would be then 1K to December 3rd, 1G to December 10th, and 1L to January 14th, 2020.
Well, let's do that, and let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And then, Mr. President, if we can do another vote, and that would be for the Department's Building and Safety's recommendations, which is for 1A through 1F to confirm the lien, 1H confirm the lien, and 1J to receive and file it as the fees have been rescinded.
Okay, let's... On those items, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, do you want to reconsider the ordinances?
Yes, and those would be the ordinances for Items 2 through 7 and 12 through 14.
All right, so, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now, let's actually vote on the items. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, why don't I... Ms. Rodriguez, are you prepared to... So, now, let's turn the floor over to Ms. Rodriguez for a presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, colleagues. So, I am proud to be joined today to honor Harut Pambukjian, an accomplished Armenian-American musician, whose career spans over 40 years and 40 albums. Would you please help me by giving him a round of applause? He was born in Yerevan, Armenia, in 1950, and was influenced by his mother's love for his mu... for music and singing. His family lived modestly and couldn't always afford music lessons, but he continued to pursue his dream, becoming a great musician. He convinced his mother to buy him a guitar, but as a lefty... I'm a lefty, too. But as a lefty, he played it upside down, astonishing audiences, which earned him the nickname Lefty Harut. At the age of 18, he formed a band called Erebuni in Armenia. However, being a young musician in Armenia, a country under Soviet rule, was nearly impossible as the government filtered all the music on radio and television. Harut and his family left Armenia in 1975, and by 1976, Harut had taken up residence in Los Angeles, in the heart of Little Armenia in East Hollywood. Here in the United States, he had full artistic freedom to express himself. His unique manner of performance and touching, soulful songs have earned him the love of his fans regardless of their age or wherever they live. He is a global star within the Armenian communities across the world, spanning generations of fans. In 2000, the Los Angeles Weekly did a story about Harut, calling him "The Wedding Singer", recognizing how the star launched his career performing weddings and baptisms. In addition to being a musician, he has a long history of giving back to his community. After the devastating earthquake in Armenia in 1988 that killed 25,000 people, he left and left more than 500,000 homeless. He held a series of large-scale benefit concerts. Having witnessed the horrors and lived through the civil war in Lebanon, he has always considered it his duty to use his artistic talent for the benefit of humanitarian initiatives. As a descendant of survivors of the Armenian genocide, he has continuously advocated for education, recognition, and prevention on the topic. Nearly 40 years after his arrival in the United States, Harut continues to sell out venues across the globe, including the Dolby Theater, the Casino de Paris, and the State Kremlin Palace. I am so proud to declare today, November 26, 2019, as Harut Pambukjian Day in the City of L.A. Congratulations, Harut. And at this time, I'd like to invite our honoree for some remarks.
You know what, Ms. Rodriguez? Before we do that, I'd like to get Mr. Krikorian in on this. So, Mr. Krikorian, if it's okay, go for it.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I especially appreciate that, being asked to speak now, because I would never, ever want to follow Harut Pambukjian, that's for sure. So... But, Ms. Rodriguez, thank you for bringing Harut in to council again. He's no stranger to these chambers or to any of us. All of you members who have been to significant Armenian events have seen Harut perform. It's appropriate that we declare today Harut Pambukjian Day, but in our community, honestly, any weekend evening is Harut Pambukjian Day in the City of Los Angeles. But I want to speak not to his music so much, which is such an important part of life in the Armenian diaspora and especially here in Los Angeles. I want to speak to his natural humanitarian instincts and his use of his talents and his fame and his popularity to advance the really most important causes of the Armenian community. And, Ms. Rodriguez, you are very right about his work with regard to the Armenian earthquake. When Gmri and Spitak and other places were so badly devastated, when tens of thousands of people died in an instant in that earthquake, Armenia was reeling, not just from the earthquake, but the ongoing energy blockade that it was suffering at the hands of its enemies, the impact of the war with Azerbaijan relating to Artsakh, and just transitioning from a former Soviet state into a state of democracy and openness. And with all of these challenges, Armenia was really devastated. And Harut Pambukjian, Harut Pambukjian went to Hayastan in the midst of all of that, again and again and again, going and performing dozens of times and lifting those people up, giving them hope, giving them joy at an otherwise joyless time. You know, we celebrate, even to this day, we celebrate Bob Hope as a great American for going into difficult areas, war zones, places to lift up our American troops in their times of challenges. Well, there's no question in my mind that sort of the Armenian equivalent of that, if you will, is Zakharut. And what you did for Armenia then and what you continue to do for Armenia to this day, every single time there's a genocide commemoration, at the Centennial March, at every other time that we've come together to demand justice and recognition for the genocide, you've been there, again, lifting up people and inspiring people. As we fight for the sovereignty and independence and freedom and safety of the people of Artsakh, again and again, you are there fighting for those who need our support. And so, for all of those reasons, even more than the joy that you bring us when we go to a wedding or a Barahantis or, you know, any other event in this community where you're performing, it's for that that I think this city and all of the Armenian diaspora owes you a great debt of gratitude, and I appreciate your service, and I'm so grateful to Ms. Rodriguez for honoring you today.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for this honor. You know, I come to this country in 1975, this only country when my dreams come true. I recorded more than 39 volumes of records, thousands of concerts around the world. It can't happen only in America. Thank you for this honor, this everything. My last word to me. God bless Armenia. God bless Artsakh. God bless Armenian diaspora around the world. And finally, God bless United States of America, who I love so much. Thank you for this honor.
Harut, thank you so much for entertaining the world and bringing your music and uplifting people everywhere. Congratulations. We are proud to declare this day in your honor.
Thank you very much.
Give him one more round of applause. Okay, well, let's wait a minute, let the chambers clear. Mr. Corretts? Okay, before I call on you, I want to... I think, Mr. Bloominfield, did you want to kick this off?
Mine is a procedural thing.
Okay, well, there... Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I wanted to reconsider that lien item, 1K, which we continued, and after we reconsidered, would like to recommend we receive and file it in as much as it's under our...
Okay, let's do that quickly. So, let's vote on reconsideration. Let's... And that was on 1K. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, so, and then, that'll be received and filed unless there's an objection. Okay, so, Mr. Bloominfield, let's move to your...
Great, thank you.
Wait, wait. I'm told we should vote on the receive and file. So, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So, Item 16, colleagues, I don't expect this is controversial, but it's a big deal, so I wanted to flag it. I know Mr. Bonin has a question or two for Adele, but what this has to do with is our street furniture contract. Our street furniture contract, as all of you know, it's been before us a few times. Since I've been the Chair of Public Works, I've been urging us to figure out a way to either renew the current one or go to RFP for a new one. Because the street... The contract we have dates back to 2001. It's a 20-year contract. It was supposed to have been reviewed back in '07, but getting that process to happen hadn't happened. When I took over as Chair, I wanted to push this forward so that we're not up against the gun in 2021, when our contract expires. Just to review, this came before this council, a possible renewal. We decided as a council to send it back for negotiation, and if there... If we couldn't get a satisfactory answer, we're all sides were completely happy with to then move to RFP. What's before us today is that second step, is moving to RFP. And just to reiterate, one of the prime considerations as Chair, and we talked about this in committee, is the main purpose of this contract needs to be the transit riders. You know, yes, it's about a lot of things, and we're going to get revenue as a city, but at the end of the day, our street furniture is about making... incentivizing public transit, making it comfortable for riders, providing shade, providing the amenities that we need, that all of Angelenos need, to be able to comfortably ride on our public transit. And that's what this is about. And the RFP, today, we're just authorizing the department to move forward, as we discussed before. Officially, we're saying to do it as an RFP. So, I urge your support on this, and I yield my time. Mr. Bonin? Thank you, Mr. Corretts, and I'd like to thank Mr. Bloominfield for his leadership in getting us to this point. I don't think there's many people in Los Angeles who've been satisfied with the current contract for the past nearly 20 years, and we now have an opportunity to get it right. From my perspective, both as Chair of the Transportation Committee, as a member of the Board of Directors of Metro, and as an advocate for increased public transit, I want to make sure that our commitment in this new contract is to improving the transit experience and making sure that we have a good bus shelter system. And I'd like to hear first from Adele what your thoughts are and what your commitment is to that as a priority.
Great, thank you, Councilman Adele Hashli, General Manager of Streets L.A. You know, as you know, Streets L.A.'s vision and mission has transformed to enhance and equality of life for all. And one of the things that I take to heart, and we all take to heart, is really providing holistic solutions. And the biggest thing that we see in need to is the last and first mile, how we connect people, to allow people to go from their transit stop to their work, to the school, to the park, and provide that connection. It's not just street furniture, it's getting trees, shade, all that to come together. But in this contract specifically, what the drive as the Chair of Public Works Committee mentioned, Councilman Bloominfield, is what we need to create is more transit shelters that are driven and shade around transit shelters, because we know that L.A.'s going to get hotter, and there's a lot of locations that we have a lot of sun, especially up in the San Fernando Valley. in the San Fernando Valley, other parts of the city. But we want to create more transit shelters and street furniture to better support the public transit use in our residents, especially in the high transit areas and in the areas exposed to the highest sun. That's the number-one priority. So we already started the process of mapping and working with MTA and DOT on looking at the highest transit users and the transit stops that have the highest use. We've overlaid that with our areas that are receiving the highest heat and sun exposure, and those are the things that we're going to kind of drive for and prioritize. That's only one thing. Besides that is using technology, to implement technology in these transit shelters to enhance the, provide people access more than just a shade, plus access to the arriving of the bus, the information about the bus, wayfinding, all that information that we need to provide to our residents can be done through technology at that location. Also, we wanted to have something that is very agile and adaptable, that we can adjust our street furniture system to deal with, this is a long-term contract, so we can adjust as we are going forward. There's things that we don't know, that we want to make sure that we integrate into this. So this is going to be flexible enough, but I want to assure you that really the focus is providing our residents a better access to safe transit stops that can allow them to move around the city using our transit system, because we know our goal is to double that. And our goal is to provide a safe access for our residents, especially in the area that have the highest ridership and the highest exposure to heat.
Thank you. Bus ridership in the county is declining at a time when we need it to be increasing. And the city's going to be unlivable, and we're going to be making the planet less hospitable if we don't get bus ridership up. And that's not just on Metro, it's also on the municipalities. We have to be providing bus transit lanes in our cities, and we need to be making the experience before and after you get on the bus safer and more convenient and more friendly. And so, it's about shade and seating and lighting and information, and I'm glad to hear you committed to that. I'm glad to hear you say you're working with Metro on mapping. I'd like to ask you to do an additional thing to work with Metro, and that's about coordinating on the design of bus stops. I'm not urging you to, like, take direction from Metro, but Metro is launching a world-class bus initiative that is including standards for bus amenities. I think it would be significant for us to consult with them. I'd love if you could meet with Phil Washington over at Metro, I'd be happy to facilitate that. And as this goes forward, I just want to make sure that that is a priority for us. I'd also just note, too, that as this goes forward and as we are putting things in the public right-of-way on our sidewalks, this is potentially an opportunity and is also transit-friendly to be helping to repair some of our sidewalks around those transit stops.
Yeah, and that's, you know, we've got to make sure that it's not just about a transit shelter, it's the sidewalk, the trees, all the connection. But one thing is, we're working with Metro on this, and you can help us on the side of the board, is as they are readjusting their bus routes, as you know, they're going through whole planning, we need to have that information ahead of time, because for us to really address bus shelters, we need to get involved early in the process. And I'm working with Phil on that one, whatever you can do to help make sure that is both ways also.
Yeah, well, bus routes can change, and they can't share information until Mr. Krikorian and the rest of us on the board actually vote on what the changes will be.
It'd be good to start thinking that.
But that's why I'm glad it's flexible, because it'll need to be, because over the course of 10 or 20 years, bus routes may change.
I agree with you, yes.
Let me echo Mr. Bonin's comments with respect to ridership and the decline of ridership and the accommodation, or lack of accommodation, that we have for riders. I would suggest that as we design the seating and the benches, that we remove those bars. We've removed them in our district, and we don't have the experiences that, this myth that people are going to sleep there or not sleep there, that it's going to deter homelessness or homelessness activity because of the bars. And I would suggest that, based on those experiences, that we remove those bars. I find them to be personally offensive, but, and I find them to be not accommodating for riders. So in my district, where we have a lot of riders, parents want to come with their children, and they want to have their children with them, they want to have their groceries with them, they want to have, be able to do their business, and those bars interfere with that. So they're uncomfortable. I find seniors are uncomfortable with them, people who are struggling with obesity find them to be unaccommodating, and so that we should think about removing them. I think the theory or the purpose was that somehow we were going to deter homelessness and somehow we were going to deter certain activities. I don't find that to be the case. And if it's not the case, and it hasn't been the case for 20 years, why don't we just dump that? Second, I want to plead to you, my observations in my district is we need a lot more shade and shelter. It's simply inadequate. My district is both younger than most districts and older than most districts, and I find, for the seniors particularly, they struggle and grapple with the fact that there aren't, there isn't adequate shade and shelters. I would suggest, for those that are here and that work with the MTA as well, we might think about some radical idea, and that would be to have restrooms, public restrooms, where the buses are. Just a radical idea, that people would be accommodated and be able to use public restrooms adjacent and nearby where these bus stops are. For us, let me add the challenge of lighting. We need to have adequate lighting around the bus stops to make sure that people feel safe and secure. And I appreciate your consideration with respect to the environment, the heat. I find myself, as you know, our work around the Hoover Triangle, it's just sitting there, and it's so popular now, I can't thank you enough. But the Hoover Triangle has been very instructive in terms of providing me an opportunity to look at the patterns and the behaviors and the practices, and that is key for the shelter, the lighting, the sense of security, the removal of the bars have all been great successes for our district. Of course, as you know, in the Northeast, removing some of those trees and roots and making the sidewalk accommodating next to the bus stops is also a really significant asset in my team. Thanks you for all that work up the Figueroa corridor. So I offer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sedia. No more speakers on the Q. If we could call the roll on this item, please open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That item passes. Okay, public comment on this, Mr. Herman, to be followed by Mr. Greenspan.
Hey, Grass, can you get the, can you get the chair?
Good morning, fucking niggers. Physical impact statement is the report, as I said, good morning, fucking niggers.
Would you please get on the item, Mr. Herman?
Yeah, the idea is to have public transparency to receive and file the Los Angeles Department reports. Instead, you retaliate by the public right-of-way to deny us free speech, nigger.
Mr. Herman, this is not the item. Would you please get on item 23?
So as I said, again, for the record, to receive and file the Los Angeles Department's report relative to why the fucking niggers are allowing private vehicle charging stations...
No, Mr. Herman, this is not the item.
On item 23...
Mr. Herman, you're not speaking to item 23. You're not speaking to the item, Mr. Herman, thank you.
Mr. Herman, your time is up, thank you. Mr. Greenspan.
Mr. Herman, would you please stop shouting from the audience?
Mike Greenspan, a nine-and-two Florida Gator, UCLA, I don't. Well, let's, the dead animal thing, I call in a lot of dead animals in my neighborhood, and one thing I can say, they get picked up in a day. You know, they're in the street, a dog, a cat, so why not, Mike, or chip them? That's not a bad idea, so then you could let the owner, or other cities call them pet guardians, know that their pet that's missing will not return home. It's hard news to break, but better to tell them, to leave them hoping and with no hope at all. And one of the things, as long as we're talking about dead animals, dogs, cats, and everything else, there is one dead animal we need to talk about, and that's those sucky Bruins. Boy, they are dead. And those Longhorns, too.
So, Mr. Herman, throughout Mr. Greenspan's comments, you were leaning into the aisle, making motions in an obvious and successful attempt to distract us. Can you consider yourself warned, stop doing it, and stop disrupting the meeting?
And this will be your last warning, otherwise we'll have to ask you to depart. All right, we can vote on item 23. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That item passes. What do we have before us, Madam Clerk? So, are there, in the meantime, are there any announcements? We are waiting for an item to come forward. Announcements, anyone? I think we're going to take a five-minute recess, so we will return in five minutes. So we will return in five minutes.
... pursuant to Government Code 54954.2. If it passes, then we'll take any public comment, if there is any. And then, I believe, Mr. Bonin wants to speak to it before we vote on the substance of the motion.
So the first vote would be on the findings.
If we could open the roll. Close the roll and tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That passes.
Do we have any public comment scheduled?
It appears we do not have any public comment.
There are no speaker cards.
Thank you.
So public comment is closed on this item.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to the city attorney for making the findings. As was noted, there is a severe weather condition coming to Los Angeles. Temperatures are getting significantly colder, and it is going to be getting significantly wetter, including on Thanksgiving Day. And as was noted, the emergency winter shelters are... Most of them are not going to be open on December 1st. LASSA, to its credit, is pushing hard to open some, but not all of them, a few days early, perhaps as early as Wednesday. But many parts of the city will still not be covered. As many of us have experienced in our districts recently, in the case of wildfires, the Emergency Management Department and other city agencies has an ability to open up designated evacuation centers to provide shelter for people who've been displaced by fires or natural disasters. So what we're doing today in this motion is a couple of different things. Mr. Kukorian and I are asking that the Emergency Managed Department, in consultation with Recreation and Parks, the Unified Homelessness Response Center, Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, General Services, and other agencies to open designated 24-hour emergency shelters for people experiencing homelessness until December 1st, the first formal and full day of the winter shelter program. Further moving, that LASSA work with all the relevant agencies to perform the outreach so that people who are suffering from exposure to the elements are aware of the early additional openings, with particular outreach to people in flood-prone zones, including some of the washes. Also ask that the Unified Homelessness Response Center report, along with relevant agencies, back to us on what resources would be necessary to expand, to continue using additional emergency centers if the emergency winter shelter program meets or exceeds its capacity. And then further, instruct city departments to take all appropriate steps to preserve the lives of unhoused residents, including activating warming centers if instructed to do so by the UHRC. Fact of the matter is, colleagues, it's going to be wet, it's going to be cold, and people will die as a result of these weather conditions unless we take action. So I urge a unanimous vote today so we can instruct the city departments to bend over backwards, to make sure that we open any center we can to give people a warm roof over their head and a place to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. I have a question for you. Do we think that we can get this done in a timely manner? Because it's very last minute, and obviously the rains are upon us.
Yes, we can get it done in a timely manner. I've discussed with Arum from EMD. He's already had some discussions with Recreation and Parks and with LASSA. They've already started getting stuff in motion as a result of some of the conversations we've had. And as you and I saw in the fires just a few weeks ago, they're able to open an emergency center in just a matter of hours. And we should be meeting the same standard here because for people who are on the streets without a roof over their head, this is the same type of natural disaster as a fire or an earthquake would be.
And if you could get all the information together, I think it'd be good to send it to all the council offices. So we can put it out, and hopefully some of that filters down to folks that would need the services.
Yes, if we approve this, I'd recommend we do urgent forthwith, and then we can get Arum and the other agencies to do exactly that.
Great.
Thank you.
All right, let's vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that passes. And this will go as urgently forthwith as it possibly can. Thank you. Do we need to formally vote on the greatest urgency? I forgot what we call it. Was there not a category that's higher priority than that, or no? Okay. I've heard it referred to as various things like "super urgent forthwith", but it doesn't exist, I guess. All right, so let's vote on sending that urgent forthwith. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tally the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And that passes. We will do that with all urgency possible. Madam Clerk, is there anything else before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred. And any announcements, members? If not, let's... Oh, Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce that on Thanksgiving morning, Thursday morning, Hope of the Valley will be conducting its... One of its fundraisers that it does, a fundraiser, a 5K-10K race called Drumstick Dash. And anybody who wishes to support the very important work that Hope of the Valley is doing in the San Fernando Valley to house and service our homeless population can help with that effort by getting up early on Thanksgiving morning and joining the race. The expo starts at 7:00 a.m., and the race begins at 8:30 a.m. at the corner of Chandler and Lancashim. You can register that day in front of the historic Lancashim Train Depot, and you can get more information at drumstick-la.com.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Any other announcements? If not, let us all rise for adjourned motions. And we'll begin with Mr. Rue at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as you could see, I am joined by numerous community leaders, city family, and just to name a few, we have Los Angeles Fire Department Chief Everett, representing Fire Station 56 in Silver Lake. We have Jesus Aspuro, Senior Lead Officer for the Silver Lake Area, LAPD Northeast Division. We have Marco Perez, Deputy Director of Department of Aging. Anita Micham, Principal Superintendent for Metro Region for the Recreation and Parks. We have many individuals from the Silver Lake seniors, from the Griffith Park Adult Community Center, including Victor Pierce, the president, Stephanie Vendig, the past president, Sylvia McBride, the secretary, all here, and many more, including my predecessor and former council member, Tom Labange. Who is all here as we celebrate and recognize a legendary pillar in our community as we adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Ursula Lomedico. She is also joined by numerous, many of her family members, her children and her grandchildren, who I'll recognize at the end. But Urselia Lomedico, nicknamed Leah, was born in Florence, Italy. Leah was a fifth-generation Florentine and grew up in a tight-knit family with two sisters and one brother. Growing up during World War II, the family faced difficult times. But Leah's father always expressed his love for books and music, and he passed this love along to his children. In 1948, Leah immigrated to America by ship and originally landed in New York. She quickly realized that Los Angeles was the right place for her and boarded a bus to the West Coast. She arrived in Los Angeles on a Friday, and promptly the following Monday, she had enrolled in school to learn English. Leah pursued her passion of singing and performed many times at the Bob Hope Patriotic Call in downtown Los Angeles until she met her future husband, Savero. Savero, who was working at the time as a foreign correspondent for Italy and host of an Italian radio program. The couple settled in Silver Lake, where they lived for 41 years and raised four children, and later welcomed six grandchildren. In 1999, Leah wondered why there weren't any activities for seniors at the Silver Lake Recreation Center. To solve this, Leah took matters into her own hands. Leah went door-to-door with the petition and then presented her concerns to her council member. Was that... Jackie Goldberg. Even before Councilmember Tom Labange. And as a result of her persistence, the Silver Lake Senior Club was formed in 2000 and is still going strong today, which is now called the Griffith Park Adult Community Club. And it provides trips, activities, and classes for over 350 seniors. Leah took so much pride in the senior club and was delighted in its success as she watched it grow to over 400 members. She was able to take creative writing classes at the center, where she wrote many poems, short stories, and songs. She was always remained... She always remained civically engaged, and Leah also passed this trait on to her children. Two of her sons working for the City of Los Angeles. One is a retired LAPD lieutenant, and the other one is retired library services. Leah passed away on September 13th at the age of 93. She is survived by her four children, who is here joining us. Dino, Stella, and her grandchildren. Oh, and Tony, and Tony as well. Her children, and of course, her grandchildren, Mia and Domenico. And TJ, who is... A lot of them who are all here today. And, you know, I think Leah will be especially happy to hear that the Griffith Park Adult Community Club, which has really overgrown its facilities, we have been working long for to expand that facility. And in the next couple of years, we hope to expand it across the street so that we can even provide more services to seniors in the Los Feliz-Silver Lake area because they are already overgrown. And it's because of all the work that Leah put in, and of course, her community members, and all the seniors and older adults in that area. So we thank her for all of her service to the city that she loved, and we recognize, and we adjourn today's meeting in her memory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. I'm looking to my right, Mr. Lee.
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Nathaniel Oaks Bryn. Nathaniel was only 28 years old when his life ended in a tragic accident in Northridge on November 20th. Although Nate's life was brief, it was a life filled with love for the simple joys of living, ice cream on waffles, a good hamburger, good music, and playing Dungeons and Dragons with his friends. While his autism limited his ability to engage in the world in ways that most young adults do, Nate never thought of his autism as a condition to be cured. Rather, he saw it as a gift that was granted to certain individuals so that they could better relate to others and focus intensely on solving the world's problems. Nate volunteered as an English teacher for immigrants at the Platt Branch Library. He was passionately devoted to social equity and wanted to help in the cause of Tequen Olam, the Jewish commitment to repair a broken world. Nate's life took a sudden turn on the night of March 5th, 2013, when he was riding in a car driven by his loving mother Janet Oaks Bryn. An English teacher at Reseda High School, she died in that terrible accident, but Nate's life was spared. The psychological trauma was real, of course, and he and his father Daniel Bryn, a journalist and president of the West Hills Neighbor Council, found solace and strength in each other. Beyond finding a stronger connection between father and son, they became best friends and allies against the world. Now tragedy has unfortunately struck again, and his family and friends feel the pain of losing Nate Bryn. Nate leaves behind his sister, Sarah Elizabeth Bryn, his aunts and uncles, Elizabeth Oaks and Samuel Goldstein, Dr. David and Cheryl Bryn, Stan Bryn, and Gloria Escobar, and other families in parts of California and Washington State. The pain is also felt throughout the West Hills community, which has responded with overwhelming expression of love for those who loved Nate. Nate Oaks Bryn had a short life, but his love filled the hearts of many in his family, community, and city. He will be missed, but never forgotten. Funeral services are being held this afternoon at Mount Sinai Memorial Park in Simi Valley. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. And if I could ask to be a second on that, because I know the Bryn family very well, including his grandfather, the late Herb Bryn, who was a great journalist as well. So I would appreciate that. So sorry to hear about this tragedy I hadn't heard.
I was going to ask for the same thing, knowing the Bryns, and if you could add me on to that as well. Thank you.
Still looking to my right. Looking to my left.
Just before we adjourn, I'd like to note on the record that Mr. Herman, during your speaking, Mr. Lee, was singing so loudly in the rotunda, all those feet away, that it was at some points difficult to hear you.
Thank you for that clarification. And there being no other business before us, we are adjourned.
So you can never be too prepared, especially in the city of Los Angeles.
Now, once that wildfire has broken out, I know from personal experience that sometimes it's confusing as to what to do because you hear conflicting media reports, your neighbors are saying one thing. What... Tell us what we really should be... What should be going through our minds when this happens? I know you address this a little bit, but let's take it step by step so we know that the fire is advancing, and you're trying to monitor media reports, but not sure if they're accurate, up to date, that kind of thing.
Well, basically, what you're describing is what we train all our firefighters is to enhance your situational awareness. Now, the best way the public can do that is to go to our website, LAFD.org. And I have to reemphasize that point I made earlier. And I have to reemphasize that point I made earlier, sign up for the alerts. The Notify LA Alert will give you advanced warning, and that'll direct you to lafd.org, which has evacuation maps and a brief description of whatever incident may be occurring. In addition to all of that, we're using the Wireless Emergency Alert System. So if you're in that impacted area, we put a geofence around that, and you'll get a message on your cellphone. It's, you don't have to sign up for that. That's gonna be automatic from us. So there's multiple redundant ways to get situational awareness, Notify LA, the Wireless Emergency Alert System, and by monitoring media.
Now, when a person knows that they should evacuate, how does that occur? Do firefighters go into the neighborhood or tell us how that works?
It depends how much time we have. Sometimes there's not enough time. We want people to shelter in place. Stay in your homes. We're gonna make a defense right here. If there's time, we're gonna use LAPD to get out in advance of the fire and to evacuate people. We did that at the Saddle Ridge Fire. So it depends on the incident characteristics, on terms of what type of evacuation mode we will take. You'll either shelter in place or need to leave.
Now, after the fire is over and in the event that your home is destroyed, what kind of help or assistance might there be for people in that terrible situation?
That is a very difficult situation. Many people have never experienced a loss of their home. So, in that area, once again, if we go to lafd.org, there is disaster recovery information. We do have a emergency preparedness handbook in there. It's very detailed about how to go about making a claim with your insurance adjuster, what the Red Cross can do for you on a temporary basis. We try to help you, the firefighters do, by passing out save cards. These cards are worth $250 each and help pay for immediate needs, like immediate lodging or food. So if you go to the website, there'll be good information on how to proceed with a claim.
And we were talking before about the free classes that the fire department offers. Can you give us some detail as to what you would learn in this class and how you would sign up for it?
Absolutely. The Community Emergency Response Team is a 17 and a half hour course that they present over a period of seven weeks. And they cover areas such as basic first aid, how to shut down utilities, how to assist the fire department in large-scale disasters. During the Northridge earthquake, I had some CERT volunteers knock on the door of my fire station, and I put them to work. And what they did is walk up and down streets, shutting off gas lines when they saw or heard a leak. So go to our website at lafd.org, and you can find more information about it, and you'll learn how to sign up for it.
Now, let's go back to the firefighting activities and the equipment that you have. I understand there's some good news in that you have some new equipment. I believe there is a handheld device that allows firefighters to see in smoke-filled rooms or areas more easily. Tell us about that equipment and your aerial equipment and what you have in place now for your firefighting needs.
Absolutely. The thermal imager camera, we had one large camera about this size, and the captain would hold on to it when they would go inside a structure. And in March of this year, we purchased a thousand of these cameras, and they're about the size of your cellphone. And every on-duty firefighter has a tick, thermal imager camera. What the tick allows you to do is to go into a, a home or a large warehouse with zero visibility, and you can use the tick to find trapped victims or to find a way out if you get detached from our hose line. Our hose line is our traditional means of our connection to the outside. If you're in a bad situation, you find the hose line and then crawl out. Well, now the tick will, will see that. You'll see the differential in temperature because it's all about heat temperatures. The tick allows us to increase firefighter safety as well as the ability to find people, sometimes kids, who are hiding in a zero-visibility environment.
Let's talk about the use of drones with your department.
Drones are something that we brought into the department about three years ago, and we had to develop policy to ensure that our commissioners and the public were, were secure with how they would be used. And that's, that's happened. We use drones for training. We use drones for incidents like in a brush fire. We'll wait, like, in the later phases of it, to find the hotspots that exist. When I can fly a drone instead of a helicopter, it saves the hours that we put on the helicopter's motor because after they reach 100 hours, they have to go in for maintenance and the fuel that we burn and then the fatigue on the pilots. So the drones have been a great addition to our capabilities. They do have infrared. Infrared allows us to find those hotspots, and they become a great tool for the fire department.
Any other equipment that you'd like to discuss and let the public know that you have in place?
Now, we have things like the Automated Vehicle Locator System. So now we know where all our units are by looking on a screen, and we're able to track their physical location. We have the Wi-Fi technology that allows us to predict where brush fires are gonna travel within minutes. We're connected to PulsePoint, so the member of the public can download the PulsePoint app and be alerted when we're responding to an incident where they're, where they live. The most recent addition to our fleet in terms of brush fires has been the helicopters. We got two new helicopters in the last two years. It's the Augusta AW139. And the helicopter effectiveness on brush fires is critical. Now we have five of these medium-sized helicopters that we can immediately deploy if we feel that we have a significant brush threat. In the most recent fire, the Saddle Ridge Fire, we immediately launched all our available helicopters. We do have at least a helitanker for us between August and January. And we have access to two super scoopers that are here starting September to the end of the year.
Chief, let's talk about the helipad over at the Olive View Center. Can you tell us a little bit more about what's happening there?
The Olive View helipad was reopened a few months ago, and it was destroyed in the Sayre Fire of 2008, I believe. It was very good timing because we use that helipad at the Saddle Ridge Fire. That allows us the capability to have up to four helicopters refueled or adding water to their, their water tanks at the same time. The helipad is right behind Olive View Hospital. It was a great location, and it was a true partnership between the city and county of LA to provide the funds to reopen that helipad. So, we're very grateful for the, the support there, and hopefully, we won't need to use it again for a while, but it was very valuable in fighting the Saddle Ridge Fire.
You have a really tough job, and you're doing a wonderful job with everything that you're fighting the fires, et cetera. What more does your department need in terms of resources, in terms of equipment, and then public education?
Well, thank you. Yeah, I have to say that we're in a very good position right now because of Mayor Garcetti's support, our city council, and our fire commission. We've received record-setting budgets in the last five years. That's allowed us to catch up with our staffing, our apparatus, our helicopter fleet. We've enhanced our technology. I think our greatest need right now is something we're contemplating putting on the ballot next year, a fire station bond. Our fire station infrastructure is very old, and we have some needs at certain fire stations to replace them, to make them bigger, to make them more effective and efficient. Our Skid Row station needs to be replaced. It's too small. Because of the call load activity in Skid Row is so high, we need to put more resources in that fire station, but we can't because it's too small. And it was built many, many years ago. We have another station in Westwood that was built around World War II. It's deteriorating. So there's examples like that throughout the city, and be looking for a bond initiative next year sometime.
Now, we talked about what the fire department needs to do its job, and it's doing a great job. But let's talk about how the rest of us, the public, can support the fire department. You have what is called an Adopt a Station program. Tell us about that.
Many, many years ago, in probably the early 90s, communities got behind their local station and started contributing money to provide enhancements at the fire station. And weight equipment, cardiovascular, stairmasters, that kind of thing. Over the years, it's morphed into our foundation, our LAFD Fire Foundation. That now has taken that program over, and people can donate to the foundation, and the foundation will provide requests at the fire station level for things like exercise equipment, sometimes tools and equipment for the fire trucks, refrigerators, industrial washers for our turnout coats that need to be washed after a structure fire. That's a big effort in itself. We call them extractors. So if anybody's interested in supporting the LAFD, they can go to our, our foundation at supportlafd.org.
Let's talk a little bit about the Saddle Ridge Fire. Tell us the scope of it, and can you give, bring us up to date on what's happening?
Absolutely. Last week, it was a Thursday night about nine o'clock, I was at home watching the news, and I saw the report of the fire, and I saw a visual from a news helicopter. And we had already been pre-deploying additional firefighters because of the weather. We knew it was a bad brush index, which means a high threat of a brush fire. When I saw that visual image, I thought we were gonna lose several hundred homes because of the wind and where it was at. In Silmar, it started in Silmar. A lot of brush in that area, and it was, it was blowing towards the southwest. So we activated everything that we've been preparing for, for year-round on brush fires. We had our pre-deployed resources. We started initiating the, the Wireless Emergency Alerts and the Notify LA Alerts. We got mutual aid from our partners, LA County Fire Department and Cal Fire and Angeles National Forest Firefighters. We were able to mitigate that incident. We lost 17 homes. We saved thousands. We lost 17 homes, and the loss of one home is a big disappointment. Historical fires, we had a fire there in that area in 2008. We call it the Sayre Fire. We lost 500 homes. So I'm very proud of our firefighters to save the thousands that they did save, and we're always looking to see how can we do better next time. This week, we'll be doing some after-action meetings to have discussions about what can we do better. We do that every time there's a major incident to self-critique how we performed. I'm very proud that we did a very good job.
Did anything come to mind as you looked and said, "Well, what, what we could do better"? Is there anything that came to mind as you?
Well, I'm pleased, I'm pleased to say that there's no major area where I thought we had a failure. I think it's an incremental improvement on everything that we're already doing. The technology is continuing to get better. We use a thing called Wi-Fi. Wi-Fi projects the path of a fire using real-time weather information, known fire corridors, and existing brush indicators. And we validate that with a program we call FIRIS. And FIRIS basically is two fixed-wing aircraft who fly above the helicopters around the perimeter of the brush fire and validate the path of the fire. Once we know that, we can project which areas, if any, need to be evacuated, which we load down on lafd.org, so when the public gets this alert, they can go to the map knowing that, that information is as accurate as possible.
Well, thank you for doing a wonderful job for saving so many homes and so many lives in Los Angeles. Thank you for joining us today.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm very proud of the men and women of the Los Angeles City Fire Department. I believe we're the finest fire department in the world, and I say that on a regular basis because I truly believe that. And we're that way because of the people that we have. We have a great group of men and women who are dedicated professionals, dedicated to the safety of the people of Los Angeles.
Thank you. It's been great having you on our program. And thank you for joining us for this edition of LA Currents. I'm Saidah Pagan.
I'm Bill Crowe, and today, we are at the North Central Shelter on Lacy Street, just off 26th Street, just off Figueroa Avenue, just off the 110. But if that's not convenient for you, there are five other LA City shelters. You can find all six locations at laanimalservices.com. That's laanimalservices.com. Now, in just a minute, we're gonna show you some great dogs and some great cats, one I'm sure that will be perfect for your family. But if you don't see one on the show today that you want to adopt, you can go to that website and also see all of the animals in all six LA City shelters. There are literally thousands of them waiting for a great home to be with your family. So please go to that website, laanimalservices.com. There's a wealth of information about animal care and also about volunteering and donating to the shelters. There are so many ways you can help animals.
Raina and I are here in North Central, and we have Dallas, about a nine-year-old, kind of a long-term resident here, a little over a year and a half. And Raina described him as somber.
Somber and calm, but, but he is a little, and he's, I love that he's so calm and sweet. But he is somber, you know? He's been here quite a while.
Come here, Dallas. Come here, Dallas. Turn around. Turn around. You need to see, show your handsome face on the camera.
And, but everybody loves him. He's a favorite here. But he's nine years old.
Yeah.
And, you know, a black nine-year-old dog who's older, and so he gets overlooked. But talk about a sweetheart. And what's his A number, Sally?
A number, 1426317. And let me tell you the best part of Dallas's story.
Tell me.
He is eligible for the Paws of Life Training Program. So if you adopt him, he gets six weeks of free training with Paws for Life.
That's awesome. Now, Paws for Life is a wonderful, wonderful special program that has been established with the Lancaster Prison, and we recently saw a whole big program on this. And this has been a program that has been going on for over five years. And the placements they've made and the adoptions they've made through this program and the, the wonderful training they get is, is just fabulous. The prisoners have been taught how to train these dogs. They live with them, and these dogs are transformed, and it's, and then they get to go into their home fully trained.
Okay. So, this is Dallas. Dallas, you get to go get some training, so anybody who gets Dallas, A1426317, come see this beautiful boy at North Central. This is Elliot, another Paws for Life program candidate. If you adopt him, he gets to go be trained for six weeks. It's an awesome program. He loves his ball, maybe a little possessive. A number, 1813831. Elliot's about seven years old, a lot more active than Dallas.
Yeah, and he's a beautiful boy. He's friendly. He just got his eyeball on a ball, and that was all, all she wrote. So, not knowing this dog, not working with this dog, I'm not gonna reach down and take this from him. I, you know, redirect him first. But we're just letting him enjoy it right now, and that's fine. Sweet boy. The fact that he's already been evaluated to go for Paws for Life means he's a friendly, engaging guy, and training would be wonderful, and using a ball and toys and training would be awesome for him. He's beautiful. He's seven years old, another long-termer and another middle-aged boy, and they need to get out. They need to get out.
And it's such a wonderful program for the dogs and also for the people in Lancaster.
Absolutely.
Elliot's loving his ball, and he's at North Central. He's in the Paws for Life Training Program. What else can we say? Awesome. Okay, we've got Tink Tank. Or Tinker, or Tank, depending on what you wanna call him.
Yep, or you can change his name, whatever you want to do.
Or you can change his name. 1780586. So the long-term dogs, he's been here almost two years, but he's such a great dog. Paws for Life has selected him to be in their training program. You guys have to appreciate how good that program is. Six weeks of training with absolutely professional trainers.
Are you drooling? You're a droger.
Six weeks. He's an awesome dog. He'll be even more awesome after his training.
Yep.
Seven years old. He's like, oh, late teen.
Yes. He's, he's got a lot of life left in him yet, and...
He does.
And, you know, they're, they're gonna train him and get him situated. So what that means is you adopt this dog, he'll go straight into the program and come back trained for you and come back into your home and, and acclimate, you know, already trained and be a good boy. And come back into your home and acclimate, you know, already trained and be a good boy. And he's already a nice dog. I mean, they assess these dogs to do that. So he'll be great.
Okay. This is Tink Tank at North Central, vaccinated, microchipped, sterilized, ready to go home.
Good boy, Tank.
This is Marlin, Raina.
Hi.
A1741979.
Come here, buddy.
We're featuring long-term residents at North Central today. And these are residents that the Paws for Life Program have selected as being dogs absolutely eligible for their training program, six weeks of free training. You guys, you can't miss that. And it's a wonderful organization. He's been here for two years. The shelter goes, we've got great dogs. They've lived here for a while, but you know what? They're great dogs and we're going to feature them.
Come on, look up. Yay, good job. And he's beautiful. All of these guys, you get them cleaned up and fed right. You know, the shelter does the best they can here. They do a good job. They keep these guys, you know, here and house them for two years, you know, because they're good dogs, you know?
Right, right.
But they need a home and they need to be taken care of with, you know, properly. And the Paws for Life helps with that. So come get this boy, get some free training. He's beautiful.
And he's friendly.
And he's friendly.
Again, another dog that neither Raina nor I have met.
Hey, come here.
And he comes out here with a nice tail wag going, hi, you guys, I like you.
Oh, careful.
My A number is 1741979. My name, by the way, is Marlin, if I didn't mention that.
Marlin Brando.
Marlin Brando, handsome boy. North Central, come meet me and get some free training for me. Raina, you are handling James Winston.
James Winston.
And I want to make sure you call him by his right name, James Winston. And look at, he's been in a foster home and he's also available for the Paws for Life Program.
He goes, I want more cookies. Yeah, you're very good.
Friendly.
Friendly. Come here.
He's medium activity for an eight-year-old. He's a doll.
Good boy. You're just so happy. He goes, I want the cookies. I want to sit for my treats. Good boy.
My A number is 1782040.
Good. Good job.
Oh, my gosh. Look at how focused he is, Raina.
Look at me. Good job. Well, he's been in foster, I think, a couple times, she said. So he's been homes, you know, he's been in homes. He's probably had some minimal training. And very engaging and friendly boy. Yeah, I know. I know. I hear you.
Taylor James Winston. Do not call me by my short name. Call me James Winston. I'm at North Central. I've been vaccinated, microchipped and sterilized. I know some commands, but I'll learn more because I'm in the Paws for Life Program. And I'm just Mr. Friendly.
I know. You're food motivated. That's very nice. That's very nice. Very sweet boy, very engaging, very, you know, willing to learn, obviously. And get some training on this boy. He's beautiful.
1782040. James Winston, you're a cutie.
Good job.
And a volunteer favorite. Raina has Dale. He is not in the training program, but Raina, I'd say he probably needs some training.
Oh, he needs training, but he's just happy. Yeah, happy and big and strong. Hello. And I know it. And just doesn't have manners yet, but oh my God, you know, he just can't.
Could he have manners?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Could have manners. Absolutely. He's about seven years old. He's an active seven-year-old.
Darling.
If you want a dog to play with you in the backyard, maybe go for long walks, maybe go for hikes, I think Dale might be the dog.
He's the boy.
A1800300. Active seven-year-old.
Beautiful boy.
Gorgeous, gray and white. His name's Dale.
Come on over here.
He said, my name is Dale and I'm a busy boy.
He goes, I've been out in the yard now and I want to just run and play. He's a good boy. Come see this beauty.
We have probably the opposite personality to Dale, who was just out here. But she's only been here a couple of months. She might have had an owner and she's new to this environment. It's scary.
Yeah, she's more timid and a little fearful of the situation. Sweet girl.
Yes.
But again, you just got to go slow and help her.
Acclimate.
Acclimate a little bit. And she's a lovely, lovely girl. And she obviously was bred.
Yes.
She had pups at some point. And who knows how long ago that was? And that could be part of her trauma, you know, being separated too soon, maybe. But she's a lovely girl, Maggie.
She's seven years old. Her A number is 1881353. She's the smallest of the big dogs that we've had.
Yeah, what a dear.
She's a sweetheart. She would be, she's seven. She probably is not this mellow once she acclimates, but maybe a more quiet dog than, say, Dale.
Yeah, absolutely. She's a dear. She's a dear girl. My heart goes out to these little timid, overwhelmed girls' dogs, you know, because they just need that little more patience and time. But they come around great.
A1881353. This is Maggie and she's enjoying being petted.
She is. She's doing okay. You're doing okay.
Good girl, Maggie.
Good girl, Mags.
Raina, we have a small dog.
Look at the baby girl. Now, looking at this girl, look, she come trotting in here.
She did.
She doesn't have any gray.
Nope.
She's just gorgeous.
How old is she?
They're saying 13 and I don't believe it. I don't believe it.
No.
And also, but even if, they can live to be 20 years old.
Sure they can.
If, you know, I mean, she's in good health. She's got good weight. She's just prancing around so happy. Sweet, sweet girl. Come see, what is her name?
Milk.
Milk. Milk.
You know her name. She knows her name. How cute is that? Her A number, 1901356. You know, it would just give you such heart to adopt a 13-year-old dog, a 13-year-old cat, a 13-year-old whatever. Come, Milk would be so easy, you guys. She doesn't need the six-week training program.
No, she does not.
She's ready to go home, sit in your lap, chill and watch, oh, I don't know, your favorite TV show. One A, 1901356. She's falling asleep in Raina's arms. Raina just met her, guys. She would be so, so easy.
This is where she wants to be. And she should be at this point in her life. And just enjoy life with quality at the end of her life. But again, these guys can live a long time. These little dogs live a long time.
Don't get her thinking that it's going to be a short term. This could be a long term. Treat her well and she'll pay you back.
Yep. Awesome dogs.
Amazing, amazing.
All these seniors, to me, they're just middle-aged. They're not even really seniors. And they have some life left and they're going to get trained. I loved them all. They're great. And that little Milk, awesome.
No training required.
No training required. Speaking of training, though.
Oh.
Okay, so had a friend ask me about begging.
Begging.
Begging at the table or begging for food, begging in the home, how to deal with that, okay? Dogs are smart, you see. They know you got stuff on your plate, you're cooking, you know, their nose knows.
Yep.
So of course they're going to want what you have. And oftentimes, people have given them things that they've had in their plate or, you know, inappropriately given them people food. I give people food all the time. I'm not saying people food is bad, provided it's healthy people food, not a lot of seasonings and some things that are toxic. But provided you use it appropriately, they have to earn it, then that's fine. But feeding off of your plate or doing things that, you know, encourage them to beg.
Beg, okay.
And I always, when I go into the homes, I say, dogs should not be under the table at all.
Okay.
Well, he just lays there, but I think it's inappropriate. It's fine if there's no food. But once food is there, you know, out of the area. But let's say you are sitting down to eat and here comes your dog. They've already ate their food and I want yours and all that. So here's the thing, there's ways to deal with it. One of it, of course, is training, which means you teach your dog to go lay on his bed.
While you're eating.
While you're eating. And he has to stay there. And you have to go through that training process to teach them that. The other way is, of course, management. Set a gate up, put their bed on the other side of a gate in the hallway or in the kitchen or off the dining room or wherever. He has a bed. You put him behind that gate, give him a stuffed Kong, a bully stick, something he enjoys. Enjoy your meal without him being present. And then you ultimately teach the dog that, oh, when they sit down to eat, I go here and I get something good.
Perfect.
You could hold off on feeding them their dinner even so that they're more apt to want to chew on their Kong or their bully stick. Usually stuffed Kongs are great.
Yes.
Once you teach them what those are. But something special. Make it special when you're eating that they get something special as well. But they just can't have access to you, okay? So again, training, training along with management, you know, is important because you can't really train without having the management tools in place either. But training is important. But management is pretty easy. If you just want to put him away, he can still see you. Don't banish him.
Right.
Let him see you and he's on his bed and, you know.
It's not punishment.
It's not punishment.
It's training.
It's just training and having them learn, oh, this is the routine I fall into. Okay, I can't be under the table. I got to go here. I get something good. And after you've eaten, then you can feed your dog. My dogs eat before or after. It doesn't matter for me. Some people go, you always have to eat first before your dog. And that, to me, I don't agree with. It's about my schedule, basically.
Yeah, yeah. And they're flexible.
And they're flexible. It doesn't matter. It's just about how much control do you have of your dog? How much do they listen? And what kind of management plans do you have in place to enforce what you want your dog to do?
What their expectations are in terms of your behavior.
Absolutely, absolutely. So it's pretty easy and straightforward. Just got to figure out how to set up your house to do it. You could also tether. If you don't want to do a gated area, you could do a tether situation where you tether your dog to your bed over in the corner. Tethering is a way to secure your dog, you know, so he can't get up and move around and come and bug you.
We had one dog who was a little bit used to begging, the one who barked when you gave him treats.
Ah, yeah.
So there's some management that probably needs to go on there. So it can happen.
But it's happened. It happens. It can happen.
Right.
All right.
We're in the cat room at the North Central Shelter and I'm here with Bonnie, who is one of the employees at North Central. Hi, Bonnie.
Hi.
And Bonnie's having a little laryngitis, so I'm not going to ask her to talk very much. We are picturing Waffle. Waffle is six months old. Whoa. She's gorgeous. She's a good, good-sized little cat. She's very sweet. She's shy. She's only been here for a month and she was a stray. Probably belonged to somebody for as sweet as she is?
Possibly. She's a little nervous here. She's very young, so we don't know for sure. She came in in a trap, unfortunately. But no aggression, just nervousness.
Okay. So, you know, this is an unusual situation for people, for animals particularly. She was out on her own, who knows for how long, but she survived. I mean, she may have had a feral mom, but she is, she's shy. You know what? If you want to work with a shy cat, I think Waffle might be the one for you. And we need an A number because when you come to see the animals here, A1895515. It's not going to do you any good to call her Waffle. You need to have an A number because not everybody knows what her name is. Come see Waffle, a six-month-old shy kitten. We're looking at now a little bit of a black cat with a beaut-- I think we call these tuxedos. This is a beautiful female tuxedo. Her name is Rainne Louis. She is about four years old. She may have had an owner, but she's had some rough skin issues. She's got some hair stuff going on in the back. Her A number is 1905263. If you've had cats before, you know, oh, where are you going, Rainne Louis? She said, I'd like to walk around a little bit. Oh, let me see if I can see some of the other cats. So she is not shy. She's a friendly girl. She's lived with somebody. Possible owner wasn't interested in taking her back, but she is gorgeous. Tuxedo with white paws. Her name is Rainne Louis, 1905263, about four years old, and she's going exploring. Dusty's trying to get a picture of these cute little kittens. They're all females. They're all about two and a half, three months old. And they are shy. And you know what? They kind of cling together because it's a little bit of a protection. They were strays. Somebody found them. But you know what? Sometimes you find little kittens on the street. And, oh my gosh, they're so cute. Their A numbers, 1908241, 1908244 and 1908243. If you're thinking of a kitten, we've said it before and we'll say it again, you might want to get more than one if you don't already have a cat at home. And if you're really a glutton for punishment, you could take three because they will definitely entertain themselves and not bother you as much. But you know what? You can do one. It's not imperative that you take three of them at a time. And if you have an older cat, a kitten might be just perfect for you. Okay, so we have three female, two-and-a-half, three-month-old kittens. All of the animals at the Animal Services Shelters will be vaccinated, microchipped and sterilized before they go home. These kittens will have all of those activities performed also. Come see these darling kittens, three female girls. We are looking at an absolutely beautiful calico. This is Oatmeal. Oatmeal, you are so cute. A year old. Oh, my gosh, she's beautiful. Bonnie, but she wants to go exploring like our other black cat did. She is darling. She's a stray. She's a year old. She's kind of a chatty Cathy. Her A number is 1907934. You can put her back in or hold her. Oatmeal said, I want to go exploring. I'm out and please let me go around. But she's very friendly. She's a busy little girl. She's a year old. You know, and there she goes. Okay, Oatmeal, she said, it's just time for me to go see what's going on. 1907934. No, 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 don't keep me in here. Oatmeal, a year old at North Central. We have a special orange tabby and, you know, I'm actually a dog person, but orange tabbies are, can be the best cats ever. And this cat has a special story. He is 10 years old. He's a sweetheart. He lived in a house for 10 years. This isn't fair to Dino. And by the way, his name is Dino. A1888268. He's a senior cat. Do you have senior cat programs where their adoption fees are less?
We have a senior for senior program, usually senior citizen of the cat over seven years old. So he would qualify prices themselves. They would want to call and check in to find out what that pricing is for that. But at this point, we probably don't need it. All our cats are actually free to adopt right now. They come fixed, so spayed or neutered, microchipped and vaccinated, all for free.
Okay, so you don't have to be old to adopt Dino. But Dino is old. Well, he's not old. He's 10, but he could live another 10 years. But, you know, he is a senior as far as our kittens and the other cats we've looked at are concerned. Please come see Dino, 1888268.
And he does get along with dogs, per the owner, previous owner.
Okay, he's a friendly boy. He's just going, why am I here? This isn't where I belong. Please come see Dino and take him home. Okay, we have, unfortunately, another 10-year-old cat. This one was a stray, beautiful charcoal. Oh, just a beautiful boy. And boy, it is a boy. I'm looking because it doesn't have a name. I'm going to call him, oh, I don't know, Gray Boy. 1895613. He was a stray, sweet as can be, has been here for a little over a month. Oh, my gosh, he obviously lived in a home. 10 years old, you guys. He's got 10 more years. You don't want to deal with little kittens running around chewing, jumping, clawing on everything. How about Gray Boy here? 1895613. Look at how friendly he is. He's loving Bonnie's attention. He says, yeah, I'd probably like to get down just to explore, but I'm not as pushy as that little calico around the corner from me. This is Gray Boy, 1895613. 10 years old. He's got another good 10 years to go. And he is green eyes gorgeous. Courage came in with a baby and a stray. You know, probably a feral. She's about three years old, beautiful, black and white. And she's doing quite well, Bonnie.
Yeah, she's doing a lot better. Maybe she was a little more protective with her baby in the cage. Baby's been adopted and she's just here looking for a home.
Oh, my gosh. She's a sweetheart. Her name is Courage. She did have Courage. One A, 1906937. Remember, you need the A numbers when you come to look for a cat. Three years old, already had a litter. Her kitten was adopted. She's looking for a home now. This is Courage at North Central, microchipped, vaccinated and sterilized. And Bonnie said that somebody is paying the adoption fees for the cats at North Central right now. So this could be a good time. And you're not-- And you're not limited to one. You can do two cats. Bonnie is petting Pickle, who absolutely loves it. Pickle is a six-year-old Siamese mix. Oh my gosh, what a gorgeous male cat. Pickle, you have beautiful blue eyes. You need, oh, sit down and make yourself comfortable. Haven't heard a lot of chatty Cathy out of Pickle. Siamese sometimes are chatty, but this guy seems to be, oh, beautiful, blue eyes. I'm sorry. His name should be Paul Newman, I'm just saying. But it's Pickle. Pickle is about six years old. He's loving the, is he purring? Okay. He's got me at the gecko when you said he's purring. What an awesome boy. Come see Pickle at North Central.
Thanksgiving is the time of year when family and friends get together to enjoy each other's company and a myriad of delicious foods. We have a tendency to include our four-legged family members in this feast, which often results in overindulgence. Thanksgiving weekend is also a busy time for emergency veterinary clinics. Dogs and cats suffer very serious and sometimes fatal consequences from turkey bones, too much rich and fatty foods, and just plain overeating. When giving pets treats, you must consider the relative size of their body compared to yours. If you visualize yourself as a whole pie, comparatively, your dog is only one slice of pie. Consequently, sharing an unfinished plate that still holds a generous serving of mashed potatoes with gravy, a few bites of turkey, and a small slice of pumpkin pie with your best friend can make them feel miserable. If you want your pets to enjoy the holiday, stop by a pet food store and purchase some new dog biscuits or cat treats, then reduce the amount of their regular meal to accommodate the treats they will be getting throughout the day. If you are planning a quiet holiday at home without a lot of company and confusion, and you don't already have a dog or cat to share your life with, this could be the perfect time to visit one of our six L.A. Animal Services centers and fall in love with your new best friend. You can get them settled in while you have a couple days off of work. L.A. Animal Services is offering reduced adoption fees the 29th through the 1st. Visit any of our six locations for more information, or go to leanimalservices.com.
This is the motor race. Twenty-three million motor cars on the boulevards and highways of America, all of them going someplace in a hurry, all of them tuned to the fast tempo of American life. And to keep this torrent of traffic flowing steadily and smoothly, calls for a standing army far greater than that of national defense, an army trained and equipped to speed you on your way in safety. Nobody calls them heroes, but they save thousands of lives just the same, carrying on in a thankless, often misunderstood service. Of course, there are still motoring accidents, all too many of them. In fact, last year, accidents cost American motorists more than $2 billion. Here's one. Fortunately, it wasn't business. It's everybody's business. Accidents don't happen behind everyone. There is a very definite reason. And by following two simple common sense rules of the road, these costly, often tragic mishaps can be avoided. First, keep your car fit to drive. Second, drive with courtesy. Let's reenact the accident which has just occurred and find the reason. There he goes, obeying the speed laws, driving at a conservative pace. He thinks his brakes are all right, and perhaps they are for ordinary usage. Of course, he isn't expecting an emergency, but here is an emergency. He stands on the brakes. A serious accident that could have been prevented if his car had been fit to drive. Faulty braking is the true public enemy number one of safe motoring. Few motorists realize the tremendous momentum of a motor car in motion. For instance, at 60 miles an hour, the average car actually has greater impact power than a six-inch projector. Or to put it another way, at a mile a minute speed, your car has the momentum equal to driving off a 10-story building. Trick photography, of course, but it's no exaggeration of the job your brakes have to perform to stop your car at 60 miles an hour. How are the brakes on your own car? Could you stop as quickly and as smoothly as this Plymouth? Notice that although the driver had both hands off the steering wheel, there was no skidding. According to police safety standards, at 20 miles an hour, your car should be able to stop within 36 feet. The new Plymouth stops in half that distance. Put your own car to that test. See how well it measures up with modern safety standards. For safe, certain stopping, brakes must work equally and evenly. This testing machine plays no favors. In a minute, it tells you whether your brakes are trustworthy. Don't take a chance. Be sure your brakes are right. And when you buy a new car, be sure it has self-equalizing hydraulic brakes. Out on the boulevard and the open road, little acts of carelessness frequently are responsible for major consequences. Hey! That was close, and it might have been closer. Just suppose our Plymouth hadn't had the world's safest brakes. Here's what might have happened. Of course, the driver of the leading car should have signaled. On the other hand, the other driver disregarded one of the primary rules of safe motoring. He was following closer than his assured stopping distance. And speaking of hand signals, here's a set which are clearly understandable to any motorist. This clearly indicates a left turn. Here is a signal for a right turn. Attention following traffic. She's going to stop. Now let's leave the boulevard for a moment for a little lesson in courtesy. On foot, this chap is the very soul of courtesy and chivalry. He has all the marks of breeding which distinguish a gentleman from a hoodlum. But when he gets behind the wheel of an automobile, he suddenly becomes a 100-horsepower bully. The man who would never consider blocking a theater aisle thinks nothing of loping along at a snail's pace out in the lane of fast traffic. A nuisance, of course, but more important, a genuine menace to safety. Anyone who wants to pass does so at his own risk and everyone else's risk. In this enlightened day and age, can you imagine two gentlemen battling tooth and nail to decide which will be the first into an elevator? But how often have you observed drivers' crumpled fenders, or worse, in some utterly childish attempt to beat out a fellow motorist? On the football field, this probably would be classified as high-grade broken-field running, but on the boulevard, it is the quick route to trouble. Follow the cut-in driver home, and nine cases out of 10, you'll find he's hurrying to nothing more important than last week's funny paper. And that at the risk of his fenders and perhaps his neck. Ah, our snake driver is thrown for a loss by the traffic squad. And let's hope they keep him on the sidelines for the rest of the season. Traffic lights are intended for traffic control, but there's always someone who tries to beat the light. At best, it gives him only a few feet advantage in a headscarf, and sometimes... Was it worth it? Of course not. But it cost American motorists thousands of fenders and more last year to prove it for themselves. You can win only a few seconds, and you can lose a couple of months in some hospital. Anyone is a sucker to gamble against such odds. How much do you actually save by taking chances? Amazingly little. In a recent test conducted by police in a metropolitan city, two new Plymouth cars staged the most unusual race across town. Both were driven by expert drivers, but what a difference in the driving! One car was driven at a pace bordering on recklessness. If the run had not been under police supervision, it is quite probable the driver would have landed in jail. In fact, had he not been an expert driver, he might have landed in the emergency ward. The other car, driven over the same route, held a conservative pace. Its driver didn't loaf, but he obeyed every law of the road and of motoring courtesy. Yet, when the 12-mile run was completed, it was found that the driver who had cheated the traffic code had won by a margin of only three minutes. Think of it. Fifteen seconds saved per mile. And think also how dearly he might have paid for those seconds. Motoring must be made safer. The police of the nation are doing their part, smoothing the flow of traffic, reading out the unfit and the reckless drivers who would turn the boulevard into a speedway. The motorcar manufacturers are doing their part with the safest motorcars in all motoring history. And Plymouth is setting the pace in safety construction. Plymouth's hydraulic brakes are self-equalizing, therefore positive and safe. Plymouth's performance is sure-footed. A new sway eliminator prevents dangerous side sway. And for lasting protection, Plymouth provides an all-steel body of remarkable strength. Steel reinforced with steel, welded forever into a mighty bulwark of unyielding safety. The 1935 Plymouth is unquestionably the finest low-priced car ever built. More spirited in performance, more thrilling to drive, and more comfortable to ride in. Above all, it is the safest low-priced car in motorcar history, but the rest is up to you. After all, the safest motorcar can be no safer than the driver at the wheel. The best rule of the road is: don't gamble. Play safe. Drive a Plymouth, and drive it with consideration.